Fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting to order. At this point, I would like a consideration of the work session and regular meeting agendas.
Mayor Claffey.
Councilor Woods.
Think I have the wrong one?
No.
Okay, so I move to amend. Okay, I move to amend the regular meeting agendas to remove item D. And then I move to approve. Do it one at a time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Arrowwood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor. Can I add one thing to this?
Yes.
I understand there's been some little bit of contention or whatever with one of the items that I had suggested last meeting. I will have further things to say about this later in the meeting, but at this time, I would like to also amend the work session agenda by removing item four, discussion of potential donation to the communities and victims impacted by the Maui fires.
Very good. I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilor Holmes is second. Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowwood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and now I am ready for a motion.
Mayor Claffey, I move to approve the work session and regular meeting agendas as amended.
Motion is on the floor and seconded by Councilor Robertson.
Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowwood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I find it, I find it interesting that we're using the consent agenda to make it easy to do things. And now we figured out a tough way of doing approval of the agendas. But the first item on tonight's business is the discussion of the Pathways Program of the Augusta County Commonwealth Attorney Office. Ms. Bogart.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Woods requested this item be placed on the agenda, so I'll introduce, I'll ask her to introduce this item for us.
Well, good afternoon. Well, good evening. I would like to introduce Caleb Kramer, the Assistant Commonwealth Attorney's Office for Augusta County, and Jack Benter, which is the program manager for Pathways Program. They will be presenting, so if you stand at the podium so that we might hear and it be recorded. Thank you.
Thank you, council members, for having us come and speak tonight. I appreciate the opportunity. And I wanted to introduce this program and kind of update the city council as to what we've been doing and invite the city, if it is so willing, to join us in this effort. So this is the Pathways Program, which is called a deflection and diversion program. It is run out of my office, the Augusta County Commonwealth Attorney's Office, at the bidding of Tim Martin, the elected Commonwealth Attorney for Augusta County. He's delegated to me to run this program out of my office. Essentially, in order to define what it is that we're doing, I gave you everybody a study out of Billings, Montana that I recently encountered when I was up at a BJA meeting for the COSUP grant in Arlington, Virginia, or excuse me, Alexandria, Virginia. And it is essentially a study of the system impact for what they call high-use individuals. So this is the top, basically almost 1% of individuals who use criminal justice and also healthcare resources in their communities. Since it's chronic homeless, chronic mental health, people in crisis and chronic substance users. And what that study found is that of the 93 individuals that they identified, their total yearly usage for the entire system was over $10 million. Now, Billings is a bit larger than Stanton. It's a city of about, I looked it up just now, I think it was 117,000. So if you count Stanton, Augusta, Waynesboro, we are about the same size as Billings, Montana. And I'm betting, if you look, there's actually a chart of how they allocated costs in there. I'm betting we're probably going to be about the same, maybe even a little higher because, you know, Montana, I think they could do things a little cheaply, but there, maybe not. I don't know. Anyway, I'm, I am, I'm guessing if we ran a study along the lines of that study right there, we would probably have numbers that are probably about very similar. So that is the problem. The reason I was hired five years ago to run this program is because my boss, Tim Martin, and the sheriff for Stanton, for Augusta County, essentially identified an issue, which is that these folks who use the criminal justice system or who are engaged in the criminal justice system through the, because of their drug use and because of their mental health issues, essentially just cycle through. They constantly reuse and then get, you know, convicted, put in jail, put on probation, and then back into the system. And then they, and they constantly redo it. And in the words of Sheriff Smith, we cannot arrest away out of this problem. It is not that we are, as Commonwealth attorney, as a prosecutor, it's not that we are not interested in criminal prosecution and holding people accountable for their actions. We absolutely are. However, we recognize substance use and mental health, particularly in its co-occurring nature, as a behavioral health and a mental health issue. And so this program is specifically targeted at identifying this. Now, how do we do this? Now, actually, I'm proud to practice in this area. I'm proud to work with Stanton, Waynesboro, because we are actually quite good. We have Drug Court, we have Therapeutic Docket, we have First Defender Program. I'm actually very proud of our local criminal justice. That's why we do a good job. What is the advantage here with this program? I think that's what everybody wants to know. So if you would go to number six, I believe. Like, there's a little bit of history. And I would like that this whole presentation be made available to the members so they can look through, and there's more information about this program. So this is a model called the Sequential Intercept Model used by SAMSA, and I think it's a very good simplified view of the criminal justice system, okay? Any services right now, other than the Pathways Program, that hits a person who is involved with the criminal justice system happens in between intercept two and three. That is the earliest point. Usually, it's actually at between intercept three and four, and maybe at intercept five, you know, probation parole. That is the most common one. As a practitioner, I can tell you, the time from intercept zero or intercept one for law enforcement or first offender responder to intercept two or three is eight months, on average. To intercept four or five, 12 months, 18 months, easily. There is a whole system that has to get involved, and we've already incurred those costs that are in that chart, or at least most of them.
Sorry, because they're incarcerated?
Either they're incarcerated, they're on bond.
Okay.
Right? So that we have multiple options, what to do with them. But all of those are incurring expenses at the same time. If they're out on bond, though, so they could be reoffending and incurring more costs or be being cycled through the ER or whatever. So the Pathways Model is, we are two things. We are what's called a deflection program and a diversion program. Diversion is when there is a potential charge involved. That is intercept one right there, between intercept zero and intercept one. So that occurs before a criminal charge is even placed. So a deputy with Augusta County Sheriff's Office encounters a person, they have probable cause to charge, they seize the evidence, if there is evidence. And instead of going to the magistrate and having them incarcerated on a warrant, they say, hey, here's Jack's information, give him a call. He wants to get you in within, our model is in, assessed, and referred out to services within 72 hours. That is the time of crisis for these folks. I read, I've read hundreds of criminal justice, of drug, drug reports, you know, drug seizure reports, whatever, interaction with law enforcement. And the most common theme is, at the point of intervention, when the officer's there, they say, I need help. That's when they're saying it. That's when the crisis is. Eight months down the road, 12 months down the road, 18 months down the road, they just want to beat the charge. They want to, they want to go back into their patterns. And in that whole time, they've been getting deeper into their patterns, right? They haven't been changing their behavior. So that's why we are, we are about a very fast turnaround. And then we are actually now pushing what's called a deflection model back towards intercept zero. So we are actually actively outreach and identifying people who are going to incur these costs, who are going to encounter this, but haven't yet. So we have self-referral models, we have the material that's in front of you, the, the single rat card, not the tri-fold, is eliminates all, any mention of criminal justice involvement. It's just, it's just for getting people help. We've connected with Fire EMS within Augusta County, and they can now refer folks to us who are on an overdose or maybe who just, you know, have some sort of crisis that they interview, intervene in. And the officers, all the officers can refer to us for some sort of disturbance that doesn't warrant charges. We will take all of those, even if it's a voluntary program, because there's no charges. And Jack and our case managers and our team will work with them in order to actually get them all the wraparound services that they need. So that is, that is what Pathways is, is about rapid identification of these high, you know, high, high, high-frequency individuals who are constantly going through these very, very, very expensive services. And then rerouting them using a community model and also peers is going to be our hope in order to actually do, help solve their problems cheaper. If we go to the fourteen, thank you. Actually, maybe, well, actually, fourteen, fourteen as the text, there's also a picture. Yeah, fourteen, fifteen. So these are all the, all the dimensions of things that we can help the folks with. I can see it's, it's comprehensive wraparound services. One of our big philosophies is breaking down silos. Because, of course, the problem is that if you get, and there's, this is kind of how, this is actually a picture of Jack's wall right across from his desk. And you can kind of see, it has blue, which is central, red, which is kind of more peripherally, and then black, which is on the outside. And we kind of, we, we start the participants at the middle, and we help them work out, and they say, let's prioritize and let's, let's address each one of these issues. How can you, how, what do you need help with? And then we work as a cross-collaborated partner with all of the folks that we have made, all the institutions we've made MOUs with, in each one of those sectors. And so we can be kind of the clearinghouse in order to actually troubleshoot the issues. The problem with the siloing, of course, is that you get resources that are applied to one person in one situation in order to actually try and fix that one problem, but it's applied in a way that doesn't actually help, you know, or those resources are wasted. We help identify where there might be problems in one area that could impact, you know, the application of resources, one and another, and help make it more efficient all around. Yes, but, Robinson.
I'm just, you can call me anything. I've been called lots of things. I'm curious, you know, in your program, what is the recidivism rate? I mean, kind of as a general, I mean, you know, based on, let's say, 100 people come in.
Sure. So there's different ways of tracking it based on the level of involvement that we have. We have misdemeanor-level offenders, and this is how the program started. I actually started with marijuana, possession of marijuana, so I have really good statistics on that because I did a two-year recidivism study on those folks. And then more recently, now I have our diversion felony, schedule one and two, folks who have graduated. So I could tell you out of, I believe it was, do you remember how many misdemeanor folks? There was 80-something. Eighty, yeah, so for, when I did the misdemeanor study, right, it was, it was 80-something cases of that, the recidivism rate was about 15%.
Fifteen?
Fifteen. Fifteen, two years, we were, yeah, for two years of recidivism. For, there's only been a handful, so the N is very small, but the handful of folks who have graduated, our full one-year diversion program for the felony, it's zero. We haven't had any recidivism. Yeah. Now, there's been plenty of people who haven't completed and have failed out. Of course, they've gotten more trouble. But for our, we are very proud of our folks who have graduated, our full one-year pro-program, and we keep in contact with them. You know, we, they'd be more likely to have them come back and be peers or whatever. Yeah, we've had great results.
So you make sure that they, they go into the mental health places and, and make sure they're taking their drugs or if they're
We keep very close
same thing if they're working, make sure they're working.
Weekly, weekly, yeah. I mean, sometimes more than weekly.
Collaboration is number one.
Right, yeah. We, we keep far more, not to disparage probation parole, but we keep far, far closer tabs on them, yeah.
There is a resource directory that
To the microphone, please, if you're going to speak.
There you go. Jack can come up to it.
So there is a resource directory we're passing down the line here. We actually publish those in-house, over 150 different resources in those 14 categories that you see on the board. Navigating these waters for somebody who is just entering service, it's, it's unwieldy. You just don't know where to start. You don't know the difference between a good service, a bad service. We build relationships with the people in each one of these services. So for us, it's really important not just to refer them, but to work with them, to collaborate with them, to follow up with them, and then keep assessing the needs. Hardly anybody needs one service. Very rare.
Just to answer any questions that might come about the sort of legal question. So this works somewhat like a proffer agreement legally, where basically we sign an agreement with them that any information they disclose to us during the timeframe of their participation, they can't be prosecuted for. And then we hold the charge in abeyance, and that's the agreement essentially. So it's a, it's a prosecutorial discretion issue where we say, we have this evidence, we're going to sit on it. And then if they do fail out and there are charges pending, I then write a direct indictment to Circuit Court. That actually is another efficiency because it skips prelim, preliminary, the preliminary hearing, it actually saves officer time, court time. And usually, actually, my prosecutions for those cases are actually faster than if they, officer got the warrant, brought into the magistrate, jail, bond, all that type of stuff. So it's even more efficient on the, on the criminal justice side.
So if they go through this program and graduate, is, or the charges drop?
So the charge is never brought.
Oh, never brought.
It's never brought, right. So we don't even, we don't even involve the justice system unless, unless and until they do fail out. It's actually nice, we have a little graduation ceremony, and I bring the, the RFLA, the lab certificate that shows that whatever they seized was drugs, and I give it to them, they can shred it. No more evidence. It's, it's a, it's a nice, it's a nice little ceremony, but I keep that on my desk. And I, and, you know, it's a tool in Jack's toolbox to let him know, like, the prosecutor has this evidence, and, you know, he can, if you don't shape up and fly right.
What did you call, I heard, abeyance? Abeyance?
Abeyance, so it's, yeah, we're, so it's, we could bring this charge, but, but we will not, you know, conditioned on you doing some certain things. One is meeting all the, especially the blue in the middle, those, all of those needs. We might, we might make sure that, especially substance use treatment, we want, we want them clean and sober. And, and we are an absence-based program, so they have to be clean and sober to graduate. And then also that we have a community service requirement, so they have to do litter pickup. And, you know, they beautify the county, kind of give back to the county as part of their assignment as well, and we, we hold them to that as well.
Caleb, do you find it difficult to find housing for folks?
That's very difficult. That's one of the, it's one of the more difficult
Because it's really foundational.
Absolutely, yes. It's, yes, it's, if you don't have secure housing, you can't really address anything else, yes. And then, but, well, again, one of the, one of our advantages is that we don't work with just one partner. We don't have a single door that goes to, okay, just go talk to these. We have, we try to cast as many and as broad a net as we can.
What's, would housing and shelter include the mission or another?
Yeah, and actually, we have an MOU with the mission.
Okay.
Susan Richardson's a good friend. I work very closely with her, yeah.
Caleb, a question for you. So if this is Augusta County Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and the charges originate in Augusta County, how does that work with the jurisdiction of the city of Stanton?
Sure, and so a while ago, Tim and I had a conversation with Chief Williams and with Jeff Gaines. Both of them were completely interested, but I could tell that they weren't going to push for it unless it was, the option was given to them.
Okay.
Both of them said, this would be a tool that we could use, but, you know, they weren't going to, they weren't going to step out. But it would definitely require both of their cooperation and support. The police, because that's how the people enter into the program, right? So we'd have to get by, and even as we have from the deputies, just buy in on the, on the street level. You know, we'd actually have to have people who actually believe in the program. And then on the Commonwealth Attorney side, they, they, they are the ones who have the authority to bring charges or not ultimately. And so they'd have to approve as well. But like I said, this is, this, it'd have to be collaborative. Ultimately, my goal is for this not to live in Augusta County Commonwealth Attorney's Office. I want this to be an independent organization, 501(c)(3). That way, I don't have to run it, and I can just be one of the participating members of, of the, of the organization rather, rather than having it live in-house.
Gotcha.
That's my goal.
By living in-house, and what is the cost to Augusta County to administer this program?
Well, because I have a grant from the federal government right now, it's, it's minimal.
Is it a DCJS grant?
Yes. No, no, sorry, not DCJS, OJP, federal, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so
When you're talking lingo, I don't
So it's, yeah, so there's, it's a federal grant. We are, we have one year left on the, on the federal grant, and it was to, essentially, it was to expand what we were, what we were doing, which was this low-level misdemeanor diversion for the, for the marijuana, expand it to the felony level. And that's simply because the felony population requires way more services than the, than the misdemeanor population. So that's what the grant's paying for right now. My budget right now for allocation for, for the whole program is about 160 a year. And that's paying for absolutely everything. My, my anticipation is if all three jurisdictions pitched in, we could, you know, give at least a third of that for each, for each jurisdiction.
What, what about Waynesboro? Have they been contacted yet?
We've, yeah, we've had, I've talked with both the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and then Chief, the new chief there. Yeah, for Waynesboro.
I know, it's not Wilhelm.
Shaw, yeah.
Shaw.
Shaw, yeah. Shaw, so Jack and I both went to Chief Shaw's office and briefed him on the program as well, as well, Dave Love better, his programs, his office has been fully briefed as well, yeah.
And I'll point something out, too, that, I mean, if, right now, we're serving Augusta County. If you expand, we almost double the capacity. We already have in plans during this next year of grant funding to do the expansion. But what Caleb and I are trying to do is bring in peers who are reimbursable once certified. So those additional positions will really cover themselves. The costs will be covered through the Medicaid funding system so that we can pay the additional staff to come in and work the program. So it becomes a portion share for each of the localities. But you're not looking at, oh, wow, they're going to have to double capacity, so you're going to be 350,000. It wouldn't work that way.
Sorry, can I just clarify the numbers, though? You said about 150,000.
160,000.
Is that on top of the grant money that
No, that is, that is
That's everything. Okay, is it, I mean, is there ever a possibility that the grant money right, run out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's great, yeah.
Right. Well, yes, of course, but then you, you, are you guaranteed of getting it again? I don't know.
No, not now.
You have to reapply every
I have to reapply, and I have, I have reapplied.
That's just
How many years have you got?
What's that? Oh, this is the first year grant, yeah. This was a, this was a three-year grant, actually extended it four years, and I have reapplied this past year.
I just think that sounds like a lot of bang for the buck.
I think it's a great program, and I want to
I've definitely more than paid for my salary for the, for the county. I point that out to them. It's like, you got more than your money's worth to me.
I want to thank Councilor Woods for bringing this program up for us, and I'd like a show of hands of all members of council that would be in favor of proceeding down this, and
Ms. Woods is involved with the program and is abstaining, just to make that very clear. She is recusing herself.
Yeah, let me ask you
That's great, thanks for
Can I ask you a real quick question? Because I know you mentioned at the beginning, but your program versus Drug Court, because I happen to be on that, because I'm I'm the pharmacist you rep on.
I'm a big, I'm a big fan of Drug Court, absolutely.
So how does that intermingle and work with what you're doing?
Yes, and so we actually, I mean, we cross-collaborate, like Jack said. We actually, if someone is too recalcitrant and they just cannot work with our program, I see charges, and a couple of them, I've referred them explicitly. As soon as I wrote the indictment and it was served, I said, I want this person in Drug Court. And then they have gone on to do Drug Court, vice versa. There's been some participants who, you know, like their attorneys, like, they can, don't qualify for Drug Court. We also do post-charge diversion sometimes, and like, they don't qualify for Drug Court, they're not high enough, you know, high enough on their risk score to actually qualify, we've taken them into the program. So it's, it's a bifurcation of, of the, of the type of case, how far along they are, where it is in the criminal justice system. Because Drug Court is post, there has to be a finding of fact first, so it is, is a post-Circuit Court disposition, right? Versus, this is pre-arrest, so it, it's sequential intercept four or five, whatever it is, versus zero, one.
But once they're arrested, are they not qualified for this program?
No, we do do post-arrest diversion. That's actually in the model for the, for BJA. And that, that's simply a recognition of the fact that, like, we have a magistrate system here in Virginia, right? So the officer can go get the warrant, and sometimes they are more comfortable. I've actually had officers go get the warrant and then contact me. After, after they serve them, they said, hey, I want them in the program. And which is somewhat frustrating because then now we have to deal with a defense attorney. But the public defenders are, actually, Mr. Botner is on the governing board for Pathways. So they are fully on board with this program, and we just work with it in the system as early, and we just, we constantly, we tell all of our partners, we want this as early as possible in that sequential intercept. So we'll catch them in intercept one, we'll catch them in intercept two, yeah.
If I could, too, I, I wanted to mention, when you mentioned Drug Court, and thank you for being part of that, the parallel program to that is Therapeutic Docket, which focuses on the mental health. Unfortunately, most people who have one of the primary issues of behavioral health, mental health issues and/or substance abuse, they tend to have both. 50 to 75% of people have co-occurring disorder. We are equipped to be able to do that either using one service or multiple services because of all of our connections. So it really, it really does make sense for us to become almost like a clearinghouse, identifying and linking people to services. Outstanding presentation, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are most interested.
I'm, I'm available for any questions that anyone should have if you wanted. I think the email on the Pathways goes to both Jack and I, and I will also distribute business cards.
I've got your card and mine.
Yeah.
Mayor Claffey, we'll come back during a work session once I can pull staff together, meet with Caleb and his folks, and we can figure out a path going forward. Is that
Sounds great.
Okay.
I would really like to have some input from Chief Williams.
Absolutely. I talked to him this morning about it, and so he's aware this is on the agenda, so he knows I will be talking to him. Thank you.
Really, really appreciate hearing about the burger. I'm very positive about
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item three, a discussion of panhandling and potential signage in the city of Stanton. Ms. Bogart.
Councilmember Robertson requested this item, so I'll turn it over to him.
Yes, thank you very much. I, I know that all of us, we've been talking a little bit about this occasionally. I think some of us, I know myself and Steve both, have had complaints, whatever, from, from citizens about this. It's getting a little, little more aggressive. I know at first, it started out where the panhandling was occurring at the intersection. And then I noticed back here a few weeks ago, as I was personally turning into, off of Richmond to go toward Walmart or Lowe's. They had, they have started there, and then they start backpedaling, and they literally walk, backwalk all the way up. This person was, was basically up to where you make the turn. You either have to left to go to Lowe's or right. My main concern, in all honesty, is a, from a safety concern. I know Amy and I have been, many, many, many years ago, were involved, I reckon, in, in a sense of panhandling when we were on the rescue squad. You know, every year, the rescue squad did that four-day
Radiothon.
Radiothon, and we were in every major intersection in Stanton, and, and even going that right in toward Verona, and you have my friend back there, Chad, did a few of those over the years. And you have to realize, too, what concerns me is the safety point versus not only the panhandler themselves, but also the vehicles. Because we, it, it came so close to occurring many times over the years. Somebody is like, oh, I want to give something, and they look down to get something, and the car or truck does that and can come real close to clipping one of the panhandlers. Or they're going on, and at the last minute, oh, I want to give something. Well, unfortunately, the person behind them didn't pay attention, bang. The person behind them weren't paying attention, bang. So, you know, I don't, I know I've talked to John a little bit sometime and asked, I said, would the city, as a matter of fact, be responsible? And he, I think John told me that, and honestly, we would not be legally responsible. But God forbid, something serious did happen. You know, I mean, when you're putting people, you know, you're putting people out there within a few feet of 25, 35, 4,500-pound vehicles, and something happens, you know, that somebody could get hit, God forbid, get killed. I just think it is a, a good idea that we look at trying to minimize, is, we can't stop it. As John told me, the Supreme Court made that decision. It is a First Amendment right. As John told me, the Supreme Court made that decision, it is a First Amendment right. So we can't say, you can't do it. But there are many cities around the Commonwealth and other places around the nation that have been preemptive, and for instance, this one, I don't, you can't probably see this, but this is in Henrico, and there are several other around right out of Richmond, and it says, for their safety and yours, don't give to solicitors, support a local charity instead. And then it gives the Henrico logo and then a website. Waynesboro, I don't have it right in front of me.
I'm getting it.
Steve's, they've got a sign as well there, and I sent these signs in to our city manager, and they did kind of, she did kind of a quick mock-up of a, of a sign, I think Jeff was involved in this. And it says same kind of thing, please don't donate to solicitors, support a local charity instead. And then the Stanton, Virginia logo, and then this could be something different, or any kind of website that we could possibly come up. Website.gov/donate.
I got one here from Waynesboro that I took a picture of. It says, please do not donate to persons in median, and then it has the Waynesboro city seal. It says, for assistance or donation info, please call. And then it lists a Waynesboro number for the people to call. But it's put at the intersections where you're on a narrow crosswalk. And the one that immediately comes to mind for me is when you're coming out Statler Boulevard and attempting to make the left turn onto Richmond Road, you have a very narrow concrete walkway that numerous people, well, no, that people will be standing on, and they'll come up and down approaching cars. And, you know, you've got cars coming around to turn doing 35 miles an hour, it's, it's dangerous.
Yeah.
So there's a couple of locations where a sign like this could go.
That, I kind of like the idea of that sign, but like, if we had a specific number to call for assistance. Because I mean, I think it was Norfolk or something like that, I saw one as well too, and it said, you'll please donate, don't donate to the solicitors, call this number for direct help, because, you know, all the time you think, like, if I'm giving to this person, is it really helping? Is it helping them with housing, is it helping with food? You know, and perhaps a specific number, because I mean, the, the example sign, it says, just support a local charity instead, and that sounds a little.
Right, right. The, and, and I want to, my friend over here, Michelle and I were talking, and she had an idea, and I said, I'd be more than willing to include it, and I want you to say what it was about.
Okay, I was gonna make two comments.
Absolutely.
My first comment was, when Mark and I were discussing this, it really, this is something that I had been thinking about, and I'll give an example that happened to me and my husband last week. Because my husband, and he's probably listening to this, so I'm sorry, honey, but he always does this. We, we're at Lowe's and we're leaving the Lowe's parking lot, we're gonna take a left onto Richmond Road, and he slams on his brakes to roll down his window and give somebody money. He literally slams on his brakes, and the people, I look at the window out to the back, and everyone behind us slams on their brakes. And then I said, honey, please don't ever do that again. And anyway, it's so, there are people like my husband who, I think, caused this to be a dangerous situation. I wanted to just point out something that could be a helpful solution to the fact that there are folks who really do need resources. My husband and I were in Virginia Beach a couple of years back and walking on the boardwalk, and there was a pretty big population of folks who panhandled. And so as a potential solution, Virginia Beach had put up parking meters all down the boardwalk. And it, the sign said, rather than giving to panhandlers, please give coins in this machine, and all of the money will go to food pantries and organizations that help folks in need. And so, you know, folks want to give, everyone has a good heart and everybody wants to give. We would like to see people give safely and ineffectively. And so Mark, I told that to Mark, and he thought that might be a good idea to help with funding.
Kind of a dual, dual-step type thing?
Finding a solution to something.
So what's, what's the rest of the council thing?
But I like the idea of giving a number to call so that you can locally donate to an area where.
Yeah, I think the website, I mean, more than likely, if I, if I saw this and I wanted to say, oh, what do I do? I'm gonna snap a picture of it, so I don't think it really matters one way or the other. I mean, you're either gonna have the picture of the number or the picture of the website, but, you know, I, I just think that if you're really dedicated and wanting to, to give that, give, to try to figure out how to help the problem, you probably would pick up the phone. I mean, sometimes websites and things like that, people are leery to click on them.
Yeah.
And things.
I'd love to know where their, where their number, where, where.
Yeah.
I called it, it goes to just a voicemail. It gives you a list, it, the voice tells you, donate to so-and-so charities, gives you a list of however many. And then it says, this is where I stopped, if you need assistance, call Shannon Dew Valley Social Services, and it gets their number. So I, so that, that's an option we need, I would like to think about where that number goes.
Yeah, we need to have a.
And who's gonna keep it updated? And so, you know, so either website or phone number, I just want to make sure, whatever we do, if the decision is to pursue this, somebody needs to keep it updated, and, and we need to know as staff kind of where to direct folks, because, and I would want to talk to people who are in the know as to where those donations should go. Because I don't know all the places, you know, I could probably put a list together, but I want somebody to check behind us.
Would counsel be willing at, at our next meeting, let Leslie do some research? And then also let Jeff do some research as to where the most effective placement of these signs?
And we can talk to PD too on that, because I asked them for some.
If we can do like a phone number and a, and a website, it would be great, because I was talking to a couple officers that were, you know, they're shooing people out of a place where people were camping and stuff, and I said, well, what do you have to tell people? If you tell them you can't stay here tonight, I said, can you tell them to go where? And they said, well, in the winter, we've got warm, but valley fills up, valley mission fills up, and we just got to tell them you can't be here. So it would be great from that perspective for them to have a phone number to tell those people to call for immediate help. So I mean, this is kind of a bigger issue thing, I mean, this kind of links in with the housing commission concept as well. But to have a one-stop shop that the city could use for this, and as well to have, you know, people say, if you need a place to stay, or if you need help in general, this would be the main number. And, you know, we got to be sure if we're gonna do it, that it's.
That it's monitored.
Continual and doesn't go to time and temperature or whatever eventually. So, you know, it's, it's definitely, it would be a great thing to have, and it would be a great tool, because the police officers are just telling people they can't be there, but they have no solution. And it'd be wonderful for us to have something.
Can I ask for a little bit more time on this?
Oh, it's gonna take time, I understand.
I'd just like to do a little, talk to some folks who are in the know.
I mean, I think we all have to kind of think about.
Yeah, and then we can, so we'll put on a work session, hopefully for, I'll try for one of the meetings in October. And then we can give you some, also, we'll just put on a work session and give you all some options to think about and look at. And if you have any other examples you'd like to share with me, please feel free to do that.
Okay.
They're all over the state, so if you're somewhere and you see one, snap a picture, so that would be good.
Yeah, that's where I got that one, I'm on the way to pick up a dog.
Sounds good, all right, in agreement then?
Yep.
Yep. Fine, thank you all very much for listening.
Yeah.
No, thank you for bringing it up. My phone.
Okay.
Oh, thanks. That's mine.
All right. Okay, that brings us up to item five, which is a discussion of LED streetlight replacement. Ms. Bogart.
Mr. Jeff Johnson, our Public Works Director, will present the side of this evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I want to take a little bit of time this evening to talk about an opportunity that has come our way. And get you up to speed, maybe get some thoughts on what to do with this opportunity. Let me start by saying that Dominion Power owns a little over 1,800 outdoor lights within the city limits. And there's a couple of dozen of those that are on private property, but the vast majority of those are streetlights. And they have determined that, from this point going forward, they are only going to install LED light fixtures. So right now, we have about 120 LED streetlights in the city, and 1,700 more traditional streetlights, mercury vapor and high-pressure sodium. And as those lights reach the end of their service life, not just a bulb burning out, but the actual fixture is, is shot, Dominion will replace them with LEDs, and will continue to do so until all 1,800 or so lights within the city of Stanton are LED lights. Yeah, that, and that's, that's their program, those are their lights, and that's what they are doing. When that happens, they have a bunch of equivalency charts where they say, okay, this is the light, this is the fixture that fried out, we will replace it with this LED fixture. They go to the warehouse, grab that fixture, and up they replace it. And again, that, that's what's gonna happen if we do nothing. However, they are willing to let us replace the sort of one-size-fits-all equivalency chart that they use throughout the Commonwealth with a Stanton-specific equivalency chart. It says within Stanton, if this light goes out, this is the replacement you use. Now, for them, it's no big deal, they got a warehouse full of lights, pulling one light off the warehouse, out of the warehouse instead of the others, no, no difference, so there's no financial cost to us to do that. And then we would have some ability to influence the lights, the streetlights here within Stanton. And there's a couple of positives for that. Number one, the equivalency charts that Dominions are using were largely written based on the manufacturer's recommendations. And as you can imagine, the manufacturer would, in most cases, sort of rounds up to put in a, you know, a little bit larger light fixture, which may or may not be the way we want to go. Secondly, there are currently 30 different light fixtures out on our streets, in those 1,700. This will be an opportunity to maybe drive that number down and create more consistency in our streetlights. Maybe he'll only have a half dozen, or maybe 10 or so different types of light fixtures. And then, lastly, like I said, there's no financial burden on the city whatsoever. But I will not go so far as to say it's free, because putting a equivalency chart together, and they're called preference sheets, is what Dominion calls them when a city puts one together, is a lot of work. Dominion stocks over 150 different types of LED light fixtures. So to sort of go, I would refer to it as shopping by committee, which is, would be difficult. But again, they've provided me with some samples, Fairfax County, Hampton, some other places that have done it. They will be willing to work with us, I have downloaded all the text, all the text sheets on all 150 of their light fixtures. It's something we can do. And then when we do it, over time, then those streetlights will start to look the way we chose them to look. It's not a panacea. If the, if the current streetlight is too big or too small, or not in the right place, the replacement light will be the same as well. But it does allow us some input into some, an area where right now, we have no say. There's a process that Dominion is, is doing, they're gonna do it with us or without us. So I guess what I'm up here looking for tonight is a head nod, this is something that, that you'd like us to pursue. Any thoughts or ideas you have? Because I'll be honest, I have not sorted through the nuts and bolts of exactly how we're gonna do this. But other folks have done it, and I'm confident that we can do it too.
Do we currently have any inventory of these streetlights that we, that Public Works has to go and replace?
Yes, we know the lights that we own.
And how many is that?
All these numbers written down on my card, and that's not what I have, I do not have that one. It is, it is, I think, just over 100, maybe a little under 100, right around 100.
And how many different bulbs do you have to have to take care of those 100?
Almost all of ours are LEDs at this point.
You're, you're already there.
So we're already there.
All ours have been.
Not all of ours, but the vast majority of ours are, are full cutoff LED lights.
And I'm assuming those, those lights, I mean, typically, an LED light tends to be a little bit brighter than a nor, or maybe not.
An LED, an LED light can be as bright or as dim as you want it to be, it can be whatever color you want it to be. Again, therein is the problem with coming up with an equivalency chart. There is an almost unlimited choices you can make in color, temperature, in, in the lighting pattern, and in the lighting intensity, because LEDs are so, can be fine-tuned to an extent that a sodium bulb can't. Sodium bulb's always gonna be yellow, there's not a whole lot you can do about it.
Do you have, do you have locations maybe for the, the 100 bulbs that we have that are already LED? So do you have any recommendations and preferences? This, this one works well, and this one doesn't work well, so that we would.
Most of, most of the ones we own are, are the sort of historic-looking downtown.
The streetscape.
The streetscape, the streetscape lights, which may or may not be the right answer on, you know, out on Richmond Road or on Churchville.
You're talking about those lights, like going down Churchville Avenue, that new section there, that they shine down?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we can maybe eliminate some light pollution by switching to certain lights that just basically shine down.
Are these, these more directional, like a lot of the new ones?
LED lights can be more directional, so there are full cutoff, there are full cutoff fixtures in, on, in the Dominion shopping cart, as well as, you know, more traditional floodlight-type patterns. Again, it's, with LEDs, it's, it's, you know, there's a lot of various options. But again, we would have to look at the existing lights, and this is not, so when we talk about an equivalency chart, it's only gonna have 30 rows, not 1,730 rows, right? So we're gonna say for this light fixture, it's replaced with this, we're not gonna have a list that says, this light at the corner of Beverly and Jefferson is this light, and so, but, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of data available on all these lights.
You know what I'm afraid you're doing to me? You're playing advocate, just like my wife, come on, we're going to Sherwin-Williams and we're looking at paint. But if I pick up one, she's gonna say, no, not that one. I mean, I really don't know what it's gonna look like when it's up there, so, I mean.
That's, that is, again, that is why this is gonna be a difficult process. Because looking at a, looking at a text sheet that has voltages and lumens and color temperatures is a difficult concept to roll out. So, no, again, we'll, I, again, Dominion has offered to help us with this. And I'm sure if, if I asked, they would tell me where the nearest light of that type was, and I could go take a look at it at night. If that's what it, what it comes to. You know, normally, when I'm at this podium, I've got some pretty pictures to share, and in this particular case, all I had was, was spreadsheets and tech specs and, but, you know, the plan would be that we would, you know, come up with a, with an idea and bring it back here, and then I would have something to show as to what these lights would look like, and a little bit of discussion of the process that arrived at it. Now, I will say right now, right now, Dominion is replacing, replacing lights about eight to 10 a year.
Oh, so this is gonna take forever.
Well, again, that, I expect that will pick up as these, as these lights start to age out. What I'm saying is, we do have, if we, we can take our time on this, it's not like they're gonna come in and change 300 of them, you know, while we're sorting it out.
So this is entirely for existing lights?
Yes.
So then we, we have to consider, you know, that if the ones that are just doing complete spread of light, we have to consider like what that was intended to light, and if we're doing a cutoff fixture, it would have to cover the same area, which is a little trickier.
Yes and no, I mean, the.
You said they have specific specs.
They have specific specs, and we can, you know, the lighting patterns, you can find a comparable lighting pattern, fixture for fixture.
And one other question, for all these lights, for these 1,800 lights in our area, who pays the power for those?
Oh, we do.
So, are these far more efficient than the sodiums and the?
Yes.
Yeah, LED takes so much.
Significantly more efficient.
Yeah, so over time, this is also a savings.
Correct, oh, absolutely, especially if we don't. Especially if we don't, especially if we don't invest any money in the change. If we only invest our time and effort in the change.
Right.
Then the cost, the savings in power consumption is just that. It's straight savings.
Well, I recommend that you go right ahead and get yourself a committee up to examine this. I mean, personally, I know what my wife would tell me, you know, no, not that color. So I'm not interested. But if people are interested in it.
Well, that's my thing. I know that there's citizens that have talked to us about like dark skies and things like that. So I'm sure I see a couple out there that might be willing to offer some assistance.
I roll with my posse.
Okay.
There we go.
Smart man.
Yeah.
Thing rolling.
Yeah, like choosing a look for that. It would be great to have direct input, you know, from from Stanton as well, and not just us over time.
I recommend y'all get yourself a, get your posse expanded.
Yeah.
All right, then at some point in the future, we'll be back with with a little, with a little show and tell of what we come up with. And we can see where we go from there.
You won't have one fixture fits all. It'll be, we probably will have to have an assortment of fixtures.
Oh, no, no, this is, there is no, there is no single fixture that is the right light in every situation. Obviously, you know, Richmond Road is not a quiet residential street, and we want to make sure that we are putting the right light, replacing the light, replacing each light with an appropriate replacement.
Yeah, it just sounds like a great opportunity to deal with that massive spread of of light.
Yes.
So.
Yes, it is. Again, fair amount of work, but again, I think we've got a lot of folks willing to help. And we'll, we'll get it there.
Great.
Sounds worthwhile. Thank you. All right, folks, we are.
They're knuckle like me for saying.
We're running ahead of time, but it's now time for the closed meeting for discussion of actual litigation related to Stanton Circuit Court Case Number CL twenty-three dash three seventy-six.
I, Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'm Mayor Claffey.
Yes.
I moved in our closed meeting for discussion of an actual litigation related to Stanton Circuit Court Case Number CL two-three dash three seven six pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A seven.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
No, second.
Chair with his second, Mr. Kessker.
Ms. Woods.
I.
Ms. Edwards.
I.
Mr. Robertson.
I.
Mr. Holmes.
I.
Mr. Arrowood.
I.
Vice Mayor Darby.
I.
Mayor Claffey.
I.
Motion carries.
All right, and we are on break after that, and we will return here at six fifty-nine so that we can get back into open meeting. Good evening. It is six fifty-nine, and I'm calling the work session to be closed at this point. Would somebody please give me a motion on that?
Mayor Claffey, I move that council reconvened in an open meeting and certified to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard of, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
Motion has been made by Vice Mayor Darby. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Robertson. Mr. Kessker, please call and roll.
Ms. Edwards.
I.
Ms. Woods.
I.
Mr. Holmes.
I.
Mr. Robertson.
I.
Mr. Arrowood.
I.
Vice Mayor Darby.
I.
Mayor Claffey.
I.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And that brings us to seven o'clock, right on time, so that we can begin the regular meeting agenda. And let us start out by doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And tonight's invocation moment of silence we brought to us by Vice Mayor Darby.
Good evening. This evening, I will be saying a Christian prayer for the invocation. So if you are so inclined, please feel free to join me and let us bow our heads now. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all the blessings of this life. Thank you for our city of Stanton. It is a very special place that we love dearly. I ask you grant this council wisdom to make good decisions on behalf of all of the citizens we serve tonight and always. In the name of your most holy son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And tonight I have a proclamation for the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Do we have some recipients of said proclamation?
Ours.
Ours are here. If you would come up front, and I will read the proclamation. City of Stanton, Virginia has a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month for September of two thousand twenty-three. Whereas each year, more than fifteen thousand children and adolescents under the age of nineteen in the United States and more than four hundred thousand children globally are diagnosed with cancer. And whereas every year, more than seventeen hundred children under the age of nineteen in the United States lose their lives to cancer. And whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease past infancy for children under the age of fourteen in the United States. And whereas the five year survival rate for children with cancer has increased from fifty-eight percent in the mid seventies to today, more than eighty percent of U.S. childhood cancer patients becoming long term survivors. And whereas in two thousand twelve, President Obama proclaimed September as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to bring awareness to pediatric cancer. And whereas the colored gold and the gold ribbon are symbols of support for children with cancer. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stanton City Council that September two thousand twenty-three is hereby designated Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Stanton, and is a time of year when our community and other organizations honor children and survivors affected by pediatric cancer in order to raise awareness and help continue the research and treatment of the disease. In witness whereof, I have here on to set my hand and cause the seal of the city to be affixed, adopted this fourteenth day of September two thousand twenty-three.
Steve, you want everybody?
Yeah, let's get everybody out here for a picture, and then I'm going to ask them for a comment.
Good evening, and I thank each of you for issuing this proclamation and the great city of Stanton jumping on board with representing all the the youth that are nineteen and under for the battles that they fight each and every day. It's a, it's a struggle, you know. I've become more involved in the hospital. Last week, last Thursday evening, which has been a year long project, we converted one of the infusion rooms at UVA Children's Hospital to the sanctuary of Brady, Little Brady and Luke. So, yeah, you know how you know how, and same with adults. You go to a four, four walled white plane room, and you sit there for hours, and you're taking your infusion. With kids, you know, they get a little, little nervous and a little crazy. So we converted this room with a mural of the Blue Ridge Mountains and added a massage chair, some couches, a fifty-five inch TV, a gaming system. So they're active while they're actually taking their infusions, and it's something that they don't have to worry about. Then followed up by that, we had our eighth annual golf tournament this past Friday and raised just north of thirty thousand dollars. So my plan with that is to continue on and making each room on the battle building floor a certain theme. Lord willing, that the hospital is still on board with that. And then last week at the tournament, I announced that we do a Brady Strong toy drive, which I know a lot of you are familiar with. Last year, we had fifty-five boxes throughout the state of Virginia. One of my huge goals is to be a competitor of Toys for Tots. But it's almost local because you know where it's going. And I announced with my parents last week that St. Jude's has just now partnered with me, and we will be doing the same thing and delivering toys to them this, this winter. So, yeah, keep that in mind. I have a December seventh deadline, so don't wait for Black Friday to go shopping. But just look out for all the boxes. And if you know any companies that want to jump on board. Also, I just had a packaging company, I didn't even tell my parents yet. It's still resonating with me that they're donating a hundred and forty of the toy drive boxes out of Roanoke, Virginia. So it's growing and growing. Like I said, my goal is to be a local Toys for Tots. So each individual knows specifically where their gifts are going. Again, thank you, and let's all continue to fight as the kids are our legacy, you know. They're our future, and we need to invest in them. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. All right. It's hard to top that. I mean,
That's going home then.
Well, it brings us to the mayor's report, and I've got I didn't give one last month. I guess I've been more active this month. Since our last meeting on nine one, I attended the memorial service and presented to sons Brandon and Jared Hatcher a proclamation for Paul Hatcher Day. We have lost a wonderful man that brought much civic pride to the city of Stanton. Rest in peace, Paul Hatcher.
Amen.
On nine seven, I attended the Blue Ridge Community College Breakfast Annual Event with updates from John Downey, and great things are happening at Blue Ridge. It's amazing how they continue to improve their program. When I was in high school, which was a long, long time ago, a lot of this was being done at Valley Votech. And Valley Votech is revitalized and going strong again. But, boy, the technical degrees that Blue Ridge are, is putting out is a whole new new level of expertise, and it's really to be commended of what the great programs that are being done right down the road. So I think highly of Blue Ridge. On nine eleven, this past Monday, we had the twenty-second anniversary of that terrible day. Let us give thanks to all of our first responders, including those in Stanton, our locals. And finally, today has been Designated Meeting Day. Nine fourteen, we had an EDA meeting at eight thirty this morning. It was closed, and things were happening there. I saw some people in this room there at nine, eight thirty this morning. At nine thirty, we had the Tourism Advisory Board meeting. And that was an open meeting, and and they have great plans for mischief and magic, and it's only eight days away. And they're in high gear getting everything going for that. So there's a lot to be looking forward to next weekend. At two o'clock, I attended the Stanton Downtown Development. They hosted a meeting with the Main Street America Program, and they had some input. There was a a fair amount of people in this room here at that. Greg Beam hosted, and Leslie was there, Jeff Johnson was there, Brian Brown from the Police Department, Michelle, Brad Arrowood were there. And it was, it was a good hour. So I thought it was well worth it, and and things are happening. We should, we should be extremely grateful for all the work that Stanton Downtown Development Authority does for us as well. So that's my report. And let me turn this over to some other members of council. Do you have comments?
Yeah. Mayor Claffey, thank you. I am the liaison to the school board, so I attended the school board meeting this week, and we had some good news presented to us about SOL scores from last year. They had really gone down post COVID and have slowly made their way up. And exciting news that reading scores are now at pre-COVID levels. And so, in fact, reading scores are on par with the whole state of Virginia. So Stanton is doing very, very well in that. Math scores have steadily increased over the past three years in all subgroups of demographics. And excitingly, in, in, in science, Stanton for the past two years, test scores in science have surpassed the state average and are still, again, working their way up to pre-COVID levels. So reported that Barrett Smith reported that teachers are working hard, students are really happy at school, and everybody is just excited about the school year. And what's interesting that you may not know is that school board has a student assigned, assigned to them. And so a new young man was assigned this year named Wyatt Chewie. And so I think it's just a really cool part of school board is to have a youngster on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of council?
Let me do one. I actually got a couple of things. We are on the nominations committee, met yesterday afternoon at four thirty. Alice and Amy and I and had some good interviews, and we met, and we are making the following recommendations to the full city council, and hopefully we'll get a positive vote. The nomination committee met on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three and would like to make the following motion. To appoint Betty Jordan to the Economic Development Authority to fill the unexpired term of Nelson Ashby, ending January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. To appoint Don Bosserman to the Economic Development Authority to fill the unexpired term of William Dodd, ending January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. To appoint Randolph Burton to the Lewis Creek Watershed Advisory Committee to fill the unexpired term of Jerry Seifert, ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-six. To appoint Genevieve Chandler to the Valley Community Services Board for a three-year term beginning September one, two thousand twenty-three, to the Valley Community Services Board for a three-year term beginning September one, twenty twenty-three, and ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. To appoint Tony Davenport to the Blue Ridge Community College Board for a four-year term beginning September one, twenty twenty-three, and ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. To reappoint Captain Brian Brown, Manetta Deaton, and Dan Wright to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for two-year terms beginning September one, twenty twenty-three, and ending August thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. And to reappoint Michael Brown and Dennis Blanton to the Historic Preservation Commission for three-year terms beginning August first, twenty twenty-three, and ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion has been made that does not require a second because it came out of committee. Mr. Kessinger, could you please call a roll?
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and I thank the nominating committee for their work and for all the people that have stepped up to help serve the city of Stanton. Appreciate all the efforts. Additional members by members of council. Mark, did you have more?
I do. I hope this won't take too long. Last meeting, I spoke about it was literally spur of the moment and kind of off the cuff just because I felt so strongly about what had happened in Maui. And I said that I would like for the city council to possibly make a thousand, two-thousand-dollar donation to the Maui Relief Fund for the devastating fire that that our that our citizens, our brothers and sisters in Hawaii went through. Fire so hot that it melted metal. And they probably will not find some of those people there ever. this is my feeling, this is not the rest of council, but I can't help but think that politics got involved. Unfortunately, the wrong person with the wrong political belief made a statement. And I will back this up by something I will read here in just a minute. Oh, yeah, I am. Because of that, I pulled it from tonight's meeting so that we wouldn't have to worry about that. I didn't want to cause too much of a problem for our my present members. But I've already mailed it. I made my own personal donation to the fund. And in the comment line, put it on behalf of the citizens of Stanton, Virginia. So that they will know that this city cared enough to send some funds to try to help those people out. Because they have lost model everything. Received many, many emails. My council members know, they they read them as well. And they, you know, from several citizens saying they didn't want that to go, they didn't want that to have their tax dollars spent having council make that decision of where they should go. Two of the most prominent ones, of course, were Ms. Brenda Mead and Ms. Carolyn Dahl, who are two of my fellow former council members. Now, the reason that I say this, that it was political, I just so that you all know where I'm coming from and that I'm not making it up. This is the minutes from the August twenty-second, I believe, twenty twenty-two, excuse me, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting that we had. Page six of the minutes, item B. Consideration of a resolution for donation of a fire apparatus to Letcher Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad in Jasper, Kentucky, who went through an unbelievable flood and were suffering and and really struggling to get through all of this. So City Attorney John Blair stated in late July through August first, there was significant flooding in Tennessee and southwest Virginia. There was a call to Virginia Fire Departments in which a number of the fire and rescue services in the flooded area had lost equipment and were struggling to recover from the flood. City had a surplus fire apparatus. And we, as city council, were asked to see if we could buy, I think Amy Darby made the motion, and were asked to donate that fire truck to Letcher Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad. Ms. Mead pointedly asked the question, what is the estimated value of the truck? Mr. Blair stated that it is believed to be between four thousand and five thousand dollars. Council members had no further questions or comments. The motion was seconded by me, and the following took place. The vote was six to nothing. Terry Holmes was absent that night. And of course, that meant that Ms. Mead and Ms. Dahl voted in favor with no further questions. Why there was such a poignant reason to come up with this, I don't know. I'm simply saying I'm sorry that it happened. I'm glad that I was able to at least make a donation on behalf of the city. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I personally didn't feel good about using city money to make a donation to Maui. Like, I think it should be a personal thing. I think, you know, that's something that we should do is I mean, to give away the city's money that way, I mean, I would much rather give it to something here in the city because we're not, it's not our decision. It's all, it's we're doing it for the whole town. It's kind of hard to make, it's kind of hard to make that decision for all of our constituents, you know, and
But Terry, do you hear what he's saying? We, the council made a decision with a five or six-thousand-dollar fire truck on behalf of the citizens, too.
Right.
So he's drawing a comparison there or a parallel there. So I see his point.
And Mark, I want to thank you for the donation that you have made to Maui.
That's all right.
I appreciate the comment that includes the city of Stanton. And on behalf of the city of Stanton, we we appreciate your efforts.
That's right.
Any further comments?
So is there something that we can do to write up, to make something where, you know, that going for it? Because you did bring that up, and that was a four thousand, five thousand, even though it wasn't actually cash money, it still was a value of something. So is there any way that we can go on for it? Be able to either say, yes, we are going to donate to disasters that come about? Or we just going to say no, that we're not going to do that? I mean, that way it alleviates any anything, even to even bring it up. So is there something that we can do that?
I mean, because I said mine was even literally, I said it was a spur-of-the-moment thing because my heart just said I just saw what was going on in there. And I mean, those people are still suffering, but I mean, it was
But I can understand you doing that. Suppose it was, I had a passion for something. And, you know, it was something, and I wanted to donate on behalf
Let's defer to Mr. Blair on this and ask him the best best policy.
Well, you all are are the decision-makers with budget decisions. One potential possibility would be in the upcoming budget. Again, legally, you have the authority to donate to nonprofits that serve the city of Stanton. And again, something like the Red Cross may serve the city, so you can still make a donation to the Red Cross, for instance, on behalf of a disaster. But you could, at this next budget season, and I will defer to the city manager, but you could say, we would like a fund, write a pool of funds of maybe five thousand or so dollars that if there are natural disasters, either in Stanton or outside of Stanton, that we would have this fund that we could make a donation. I really, what I'm saying is, I think if you want to have that flexibility and policy-wise, you probably need to have a budget, a dedicated budget item for that. And I'll I'll defer to the city manager on that.
And then should we put that in memorandum, you know?
You could.
I think we should address that so that we don't come across these these problems in the future. I think it'd be a wise thing to do.
So would that be a work session to discuss it between?
And then let's put it, let's put it in the memorandum at that point. And let's bring it up as a work session on it.
Okay. It ends up in the same, it feels like it's the same situation, and it's still tax dollars, whether it's in a certain fund or not.
Correct.
And I mean, you know, is that
Well, how about we put it, we cap it so that, you know, well, I instantly thought there's seven of us. What happens if we cap the pool at seven thousand dollars? And any member of of council could recommend a an item, or they could double up if we had something, you know, like that fire truck last year, and everybody felt that was a, the fire chief asked for the donation, and we didn't have a buyer. So we donated. And that would keep it under a limit, a dollar limit, so that everybody's not coming up every every meeting under the spur of the moment.
To have Mr. Blair determine some language that identifies what is applicable to a disaster-type situation.
So charged.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Any further comments from members of council?
I mean, so I don't know, I just want to, like Mr. Blair, consider the idea, like, whether we are able to donate to things beyond our borders. Because, I mean, we can, we can allocate funds to buy, you know, goods and services beyond our borders, like from providers for that, but without expectation of anything back on that. So I don't, I don't know. I mean, if we have the authority to do that, and I'm not saying it's not a worthy cause, I just want to have specific guidance from you on that.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, if if we all wanted to come together ourselves and give, we could do that in the name of the city. But I don't, I just, I feel funny about taking taxpayers' dollars to do this, you know, and that's, you know. Well, I don't mind.
But you have to remember that we are taxpayers also. So
All right. Well, let's work on. We haven't made a decision tonight. Anything further on a different topic? All right, that moves into the regular meeting, and we're going to start out with a consent agenda. And for those of you who have not been here for the last meeting, a consent agenda per Procedure Memorandum Number fourteen is the policy of city council to have routine, non-controversial items placed in a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. If separate discussion of an item is requested by any member of council, that item shall be removed and considered separately at the end of the regular meeting agenda. Do any council members desire to remove an item from the consent agenda to be placed on the regular meeting agenda for separate consideration in tonight's meeting? The items on the consent agenda include the approval of minutes of the work session and regular meeting of August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, approval of transfer of already appropriated funds within the Capital Improvement Fund.
Mr. Mayor.
I will entertain a move.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Terry Holmes seconds. Mr. Kessinger.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good. Now, we're at the public hearing in consideration of a request by David Wilson to rezone five thirty-seven Calvert Street from B two, General Business District to R two, Low Density Residential District. Ms. Rose.
Rodney Rhodes will walk through this item this evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. As the mayor noted, Mr. Wilson is requesting the rezoning of five thirty-seven Calvert Street from B two, General Business District to R two, Low Density Residential District. The property contains what appears to be a single-family dwelling, about fourteen hundred square feet. It, this, the structure has been there for well over a hundred years. And it appears that it was built as a single-family dwelling and has, to the best of our knowledge, always been utilized as a single-family dwelling. However, it has been Zoned B two, General Business District since at least the nineteen sixties. And it's quite, it may have been much earlier than that, when it was Zoned General Business. The, Mr. Wilson purchased this property in twenty twelve, and now he's in the process of selling the property. And the requested rezoning will help the purchasers obtain financing. Because it is a legal, non-conforming structure now, and that makes it difficult to obtain financing, and also makes it difficult to do significant additions and that type of thing to a non-conforming structure. I found out that this Calvert Street used to be part of Greenville Avenue, was Greenville Avenue, until there was a realignment. The briefing says the nineteen forties, however, I found a map from the nineteen thirties, and it showed Greenville Avenue and New Greenville Avenue back in the thirties. The surrounding zoning is also Zoned B two, General Business District. However, they are for the majority, also single-family detached dwellings. Back in twenty twenty, city council approved a rezoning of one of the properties in that neighborhood, similar to this one, from B two to R two, Low Density Residential District. The applicant is requesting something similar to that. Normally, we would not like to do a spot zoning. We just rezone one property that's surrounded by other properties that are zoned something different. However, for expediency, we are bringing this forward to you at this time so that it does not hold up the applicant. Although this area is a, certainly is an area that should be reviewed when the conference of plan is updated next year to maybe change the designation from high the comp plan shows it is medium density. However, I think low density would be more appropriate. And also maybe do a comprehensive rezoning of the property to residential at that time. A plant commission conducted a public hearing on this on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. During the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to the request. And on a five-to-zero vote, the commission voted to recommend approval of the rezoning as requested. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
Members of council, any questions?
So, Mr. Rose, I think you already answered my question that you will go ahead and look at it when it comes up for the rezoning and a comprehensive plan.
Yes, I believe we should look at this. We're going to start that update to the Conference of Plan next July, I believe. And I think this area that has, oh, ten, twelve
Yes.
properties should be reviewed at that time for changes to the conference of plan.
Why it wasn't done in twenty twenty?
It was not, when we updated the conference of plan last time, it wasn't an area that It was not, when we updated the conference of plan last time, it wasn't an area that was designated or that should be looked at for a conference of rezoning. Um, unlike a lot of other parts of the city, which were actually much larger for the most part, we're looking at bigger areas to rezon with thirty, forty lots that were non-conforming, a- and this one just didn't hit the radar at that point.
So therefore, you're just trying to do this one individual property tonight so that he can?
Yes, sir.
Do you have other questions from council? Does the applicant wish to speak?
Uh, I'm not sure if Mr. Wilson is in attendance.
All right. I'm gonna open up a public hearing. It's time the council has set aside to hear from citizens about this specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach five minute time limit, I will let you know your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak. Once everyone has had an opportunity to speak, I will close the public hearing. I will now open the public hearing. Mr. Kessler, we have anybody online that would like to speak about the Calvert Street property?
No, sir, we do not.
If anyone in the audience, they would like to speak about the Calvert Street property. Hearing is closed.
Like to make a motion, if I may.
Uh, I move that council adopt the ordinance and approve the rezoning as recommended by the planning commission.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
A second, sir.
Thank you, Terry Holmes. Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C is a public hearing in consideration of a request by Mark Clark, agent for Stanton Properties LLC, for a special use permit under the provisions of Stanton City Code eighteen point five, five point zero, six, zero dash three, to allow living and/or sleeping quarters on the ground level of a building located at one, zero, four, eight West Beverly Street.
Rhodes is back.
Welcome back, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you.
Long trip.
I will not repeat the introduction that the mayor just did for this. He did such a fine job. Um, this property is Zone B one, Local Business District, and as council is aware, uh, aware, um, residential is not permitted on the ground floor unless they receive a special use permit. We have brought numerous of these type of applications before you over the years. This, um, structure, um, is at least a hundred and twenty years old. And as, as I notice in Zone B one, Local Business District, it's in the Newtown Historic District. Um, it's in a, I, I, the area around there has a mixture of zoning and also a mixture of uses. Um, next door to it, on one side is a funeral home, and on the other side, there is a single-family dwelling. And across the street, of course, there is Thorn Rose Cemetery. And, you know, this, um, going west, um, this three additional, um, residential units, and then you have a gas station slash convenience store. So it's a real mixture of uses there. And what the applicant is proposing, uh, they currently have two residential units on the upper floor, which is perfectly fine, it's allowed by right, um, but he's looking to add an additional residential unit on the ground floor. Um, he would maintain about seven hundred and thirty square feet of commercial on that ground floor, which would be on the front side, on the, um, West Beverly Street side, a- and then have a separate entrance in the back for this residential unit. They have shown, that applicant has shown how parking can be, um, handled on this property. And staff, um, recommends a series of conditions be placed on the approval of special use permit. And number one, no more than one residential unit may be permitted on the ground floor, and the area of the residential unit may not exceed fifty percent of the total area of that floor. Two, primary access to the ground floor unit must be from the side or rear of the building. Three, due to limited width of the travel lanes, traffic flow must be limited to one way within the parking lot. Directional arrows indicating one way must be painted on the asphalt surface at the entrance and exit of the parking lot, and shall be approved by the zoning administrator, and signs must be installed also indicating that this um, is a one-way, um, entrance and exit. All parking spaces must be at least nine feet wide and eighteen feet long, as required under the zoning ordinance, and must be properly striped to clearly identify the space and shall be approved by the zoning administrator. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. No one spoke in opposition to the request, and on a five to zero vote, commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the special use permit with conditions.
Pardon me?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm assuming, it, it does it, is it gonna be used at all for the business next door?
In the funeral business?
I, I wasn't aware that was being used, um.
I'm just asking, I, you know, because Mark is the general manager of Henry's.
Okay, m- maybe, but, um, I, I wasn't aware that there was a commercial use at this time in the front of that building.
Okay.
Any other questions from members of council? Uh, is Mr. Clark here to?
Sure.
Does he wish to say anything? All right, I am about to open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please approach the podium. We will alternate between individuals physically present and those have their hands raised on the Zoom platform. Public hearing is open. Would anyone like to speak on the building located at ten forty-eight West Beverly Street? Mr. Kessler, do we have someone?
Yes, sir.
Would you go ahead, sir?
Uh, it's not a sir.
I'm sorry.
Three forty-two Sherwood Avenue. I'm calling to support approval of this special use permit, as I would have the last, uh, the last, uh, public hearing. The Stanton has limited open land for new housing. So, uh, so we need to look at ways to increase the density, redevelopment and reuse of existing, uh, existing structures. We have a housing crisis in Stanton, and so I very much support the approval of this special use permit.
Mr. Kessler, anyone else?
No, sir.
Anyone from the audience like to speak? All right, the public hearing is now closed. I will entertain a motion.
Uh, Mayor Claffey.
Councilwoman.
I move that council adopt the resolution approving the special use permit with conditions as presented.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Council Robertson has second. Mr. Kessler, color roll, please.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, good job. Item D has been removed. It was, uh, yeah, Dominion did not offer. That brings us to item E, consideration of resolution establishing the percentage of relief at thirty-three percent for purposes of Personal Property Tax Relief Act. Ms. Burghardt.
Maggie Reagan, our commissioner of revenue, will walk through this item.
Welcome.
Maggie.
Thank you. Good, good evening, Mayor Claffey, members of council. It's September, so. I come every year in September to talk to you about the personal property tax relief. If there's anybody who needs background on this, I'm happy to provide it, but this is, uh, the percentage of relief that I have calculated in order to fully exhaust the one million, six hundred and fifty, two thousand, two hundred dollars that the state sends to the city for personal property tax relief for our citizens. And so, um, this is the amount thirty-three percent that I'm asking you to approve this year that will fully exhaust that amount, uh, for the benefit of our citizens on their personal property tax bills, on, uh, personal used vehicles, cars and motorcycles, cars, trucks and motorcycles. Questions?
What was the percent last year?
Thirty-five.
So is it on a steadily diminishing?
Yeah, the, as the value of the fleet or price of cars goes up, this is gonna be a, an, an ever-shrinking proposition. Uh, and again, I usually let you all know where we are as it relates to our neighbors, so, uh, Wayne's Row enacted their thirty-one point five percent on Monday, and I believe Augusta County twenty-eight percent a few weeks ago.
You're giving us a break.
Yeah.
Thirty-three percent.
I mean, what can I say?
Tell us what kind of cars we have.
I have your fun. Alrighty, here we go. So we have twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-six taxable vehicles in the city. That's up just a little bit from last year. This is a little bit of a, a shocker for me. The highest assessment vehicle in the city this year is just shy of a hundred thousand dollars, and it's a Ford. I was kinda surprised by that. It is a Mustang.
Oh, it must be a Shelby.
I don't know. I don't know what that means. All I know is I can't afford it. So, uh, by count of number, the most popular car is the Honda Civic, and second, the Honda CRV. However, uh, by make of cars, the most popular, uh, Ford and Toyota are neck and neck. Uh, next is Honda, then Chevrolet, Nissan, Subaru, Jeep, Hyundai, Dodge, GMC. We are up to twenty-six Teslas now. I remember when I reported our first Tesla a few years back, and thirty-eight souls out there have some Oldsmobiles still hanging on. So for our unique vehicles, we now have one Rivian, which I believe is an all-electric truck.
I have seen that thing running around town.
Yeah.
I have not seen it, but I have assessed it. Uh, we also have one Bentley in town, and one nineteen seventy-six Datsun two eighty Z, which I remember quite fondly from high school. Our oldest taxable vehicle is still a nineteen twenty Model A. The average, uh, model year is two thousand and twelve. We had a hundred and sixty-seven new twenty-twenty-three vehicles purchased this year. We are up to six hundred and eighty-eight motorcycles, and as usual, Harley wins the day with the most motorcycles, followed by Honda, Yamaha, Triumph and Suzuki. The two most expensive, or I say expensive, highest assessed, I should use the right terminology. Uh, motorcycles are both twenty-twenty-three Harley Davidson's at over thirty thousand dollars. And we are still Ford tough, with the most pickup trucks in town being the Ford F-Series. That's your entertainment for the.
Well, we look forward to it every year. All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Go forward to that bill. Number again, Maggie, one point six.
It's one million, six hundred and fifty, two thousand, two hundred dollars. And that's the amount that we received in two thousand and six, and it's been set ever since then.
Right. And, um, you said we had twenty-four thousand vehicle, twenty-four?
About twenty-four thousand taxable.
And that's about the same number of people we have.
I'm hoping the three-year-olds are not driving. Cause I'm, I got four of them on my insurance, so I can tell you that.
Hello. All right, I'm ready for a motion. Councilor Holmes.
I move that a resolution as proposed be adopted establishing the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, PPT, a percentage at thirty-three percent.
Thank you. A motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Vice Mayor Darby is second. Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you, members of council. You will have a tax bill come into a mailbox near you soon.
Oh, thank you. All right, that brings us to item F, which is a consideration of resolution authorizing uh, stadium license agreement between the city and Mary Baldwin University. Ms. Burghardt.
So this is the annual agreement that comes before city council, um, each year. The city owns, um, and operates the John Moxie Memorial Baseball Stadium in Gypsy Hill Park, and Mary Baldwin University has requested the use of the stadium for the purpose of playing baseball for their fall and spring seasons. So the attached, the attached draft resolution authorizes the license agreement, which talks about the terms and conditions, um, for which they can play. Uh, Chris, Chris is here. Chris. He's here. Why don't you come up, Chris? I know he'd be happy to add anything to that or answer any questions you have. I know there's been some discussion around this, so, um, I think I'll open the floor for questions from city council, um, regarding this agreement.
All right, good afternoon.
I guess to start off with, with any questions, this is a similar, or it isn't similar, it's the same agreement we've used for the Mary Baldwin. Uh, basically, the difference with this and the Stanton Braves are dates, so it's just a standard agreement. For those, both of those groups to use our city stadium. If you have any questions, be glad to answer them and or any specifics about where we're at with the design for, uh, phase of the.
Well, go ahead and explain where that is.
Yeah.
Yes.
For Moxie Stadium, as you're, all you're well aware, uh, we sent out an RFP, uh, for the design work, engineering firms, we've received, uh, I think it was six back, staff has reviewed those. Uh, we had narrated down the two. This past week, we interviewed, uh, the top two candidates. Uh, the team has made a decision. We have not entered any negotiations yet, uh, because we have to negotiate a price with the firm that we chose. Uh, so that's, that's where that's at. It, it's been on a fast track, uh, pretty much, uh, so we're ready to choose a firm and, and go from there and start the design phase of it. Okay, uh, one thing is, uh, in the past, you and I had talked about, um, you know, the, the use of Moxie Stadium there, and, um, you, you were told me, uh, and one thing that kinda surprised me was to learn that, um, who's the, who's the heaviest user of the Moxie Stadium? Now? Yeah. Mary Baldwin. Yeah, and then, and then second. Second would be the Stanton Braves. And the third is? Third is Stanton High School. And then fourth would be our local Babe Ruth, uh, Babe Ruth team. So, all right, so we're, we're third in, in, in line for, for usage of our municipal stadium. You're looking at, uh, the Braves with a, a twenty-game season, home game. Uh, Mary Baldwin, very similar, that Mary Baldwin's different. They have a fall league or a fall season and a spring. Uh, Stanton High School, you'd have ten varsity, ten JV, and the, and they're done for the year. So they're condensed, except Mary Baldwin's is spread out over the year, basically. Okay.
Now, doesn't, uh, Stanton High School have fall ball program?
They do, well, they're practicing.
They're practicing.
They do. Yep.
Well, I think everyone knows that we have this on the CIP plan for the next three years. And we are attempting to solicit the people that are using the field more to assist us in our reconstruction effort. And the field is in bad shape, and it has not had any significant money put into it in fifty or sixty years.
Correct.
And if you go to right field, it's sunk, and the bathrooms are abysmal, and the snack bar facilities and the seats are, are, are bad. And I think the necessity of getting the people that are using that field to step up and financially assist us in a renovation is necessary and mandatory. I do not think the city should be stuck with having to pay the total fee. And we have talked to Mary Baldwin in a meeting upstairs on the third floor in late March, I believe. Council Darby and I were there. Chris, I know you were there. The athletic director was there for Mary Baldwin and Pamela Fox, who was the outgoing president. And she did not want, as a lame duck outgoing president, she did not want to commit financial resources to the field renovation and saddle her new president with that, and we could understand that and agree with that. But now this proposal has come up, and we are not only granting Mary Baldwin fall ball rights, we are also granting them spring ball rights with, with no commitment at all, and I can't even find the dollar in this one. I mean, I found the dollar in the Braves. But, I mean, there's a lot of things that need done out there on that field, and I just think we need to get some of the people that are using the field to help us take care of the field. And let's just talk about the scoreboard. The scoreboards, I don't know if you know the actual age of it, but I'm willing to bet it's, it's fifty years old. Do you know it?
I do know it. It's actually five years old.
Is that it?
We replaced it.
Five?
But again, it, it needs to be. But again, it needs to be larger. That was a baseline fair play scoreboard. Uh, so it's, that's, that one's about five years old. But it's, it's not, the size of it, uh, isn't suitable for the size of the field. It's a little league scoreboard, basically. But you're looking at what you can afford and that's what we.
Well, well, that's my point. If they're using it and they're playing in college facilities and just drive to, uh, Harrisburg, go up Route 42 and look at the combination that you have between JMU Supply on a field and the, and the, where Harrisonburg plays and where the Turks play. I mean, and they got a state of the art facility and, and they have the best of everything. And I mean, I know we don't have that, but, but we've got to do something to start fixing it up a little bit because it's deteriorating. So my recommendation would be to go to Mary Baldwin and say, if you want to play college ball, baseball, you need something more than a little league scoreboard out here. And why don't you donate it? Put Mary Baldwin on it. Put the sign out there, make a nice scoreboard and then put a slot for Stanton High School. Uh, Stanton Storm to be on there. Put a slot for the Braves to be able to use the same scoreboard and at least see that they are donating something to help us out and reduce the city's cost of maintenance on the field. And I do not think that we are negotiating this. I think we are pulling a contract out of a file that has the same thing that we used for the Braves for years. The same thing. How long have we even been letting Mary Baldwin use the field? Three years?
Three years. When it was COVID, it was down for two, uh, Braves for all, all through my career, 30 plus years.
Yeah. Steve, I, like we've said, I, I mean, I would think is trying, trying to play Solomon here. Trying to say, listen, we'll, we'll let you do fall ball. You know, we'll, we'll sign the contract for fall ball. But before we sign one for the spring, we've got to have some meetings and have some agreements.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't want to, yeah, cause I know they're already practicing and I have no interest in stopping him on that. Because obviously we're kind of hitting the new president with this. But I mean, we did appropriate some of our funds to do this study to determine what we specifically need to do to this field. And if we were having a talk about whether we want to build a baseball stadium in a field somewhere, this would be a different discussion, but we already have one and we should take care of it. But we are not the primary, even the secondary users of this facility. So I, I think that we do need to talk to the others. Now, I'm fine with going ahead with the study to see what needs to be done and see the cost of it. But that will give us specifics to approach our partners in this stadium with. So with that in mind, I, I.
Well, I will say that in the past, the, the agreement or mutual understanding with the Braves and, and Mary Baldwin is that when their seasons are taking place, park maintenance or our responsibility is, is to mow. And both organizations do all the infield work, the drag and the keeping the, the, the facility in, in the best shape it can be. And both of them do a great job at it. So that's not absorbed by us. That's kind of their contribution is when they're here, they're, it's not a burden for park maintenance to, to make sure the field's ready for them when they play. So.
That's, that's true. There's certainly a savings of them, for them in, in not having to own a field. So I, I think, yeah, we need to, we need to move.
That's definitely, man.
Yeah.
Chris, I, I'm just, how much did you pay for the, uh, the scoreboard that you have now? Do you have any idea?
Uh, if my memory's right, it was 10, 10, 11,000. And it's the same, I mean, when you, if you get a, a, a really big scoreboard, as you see at some of these, not a, not a division one college, smaller college, you're looking 30, 40.
Crazy.
The newest scoreboard we bought recently was three years ago for, uh, the football stadium. And it's, you know, it, it was, it's nice, but, uh, they're not cheap.
Understand.
Then when you start adding names to it and, you know, banners and all that, it get the price just keeps going up. And it depends on, you know, there's so many different variations. So other than just ball strikes and out, you know?
Exactly. I mean, without specific numbers, you know, from an actual study, we did the guess of over one and a half million is, is, you know, beyond a scoreboard, uh, and a whole lot more. As you, as you said, outfield work, uh, you know, that whole. You see, it's a, a lot of, you know, let alone this accessibility issues for, for, you know, the stadium itself and all that. So there's a whole lot that, that should be done that would, it'd be nice to think it would set us up for 50 years, but.
Yeah.
Well, that, maybe we could use the field for other events.
It would be great to see it, uh, available as a mixed use facility, uh, outdoor concert things or something like that, but who knows?
Their only other use for it, uh, other than baseball would be the Fourth of July. The Fourth of July event, which is the way that event is going. It's going to not in the too near distant future fill up that whole, you know, for the Statler era with the crowd. This last year was unbelievable with the crowd. We saw it.
Well, good. That's a good problem for us to handle.
It is.
Yeah. All right. I'll entertain emotions.
Okay. Uh, well, with, with our discussion in mind, I'd like to, uh, move to a, amend section three of the license agreement as presented, uh, so that this license would end on December 31st, 2023, uh, to give Mary Baldwin a chance to play fall ball uh, through it. And then we would have a, an opportunity to, to talk with them.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Second, but Counselor Robertson. Mr. Kessler.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Chris, more, more work for you to do. Thanks, sir. Thank you for everything you do.
Well, we, we did just, uh, adopt an amended resolution, but we have to adopt the actual amended. Well, we made an amendment, but we have to adopt the amended resolution.
All right. Let's go through it all over again. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I move the city council approve the resolution authorizing a license agreement between the city and Mary Baldwin University for the use of John Moxie Memorial Baseball Stadium. As noted in the license, uh, the amended license agreement and further authorize and direct the city manager to sign the license agreement with as modified. Yeah. With such modifications as in final form as approved by the city attorney.
You repeat that, please.
All right, motion is made. Is there a?
A second.
Chair Holmes, second. Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. That brings us to matters from the city, man. Ms. Bogart.
I have a lot tonight, too.
Good.
Um, so just a reminder that early voting starts on September 22nd, which is a week. Our, um, the curbside voting spot that's across from police department on Central Avenue will be used, um, will be in use during the week for the duration of early voting. And voting will happen on two Saturdays, October 28th and November 4th from nine to five, right here in City Hall. The second item is a, uh, public forum on bicycle infrastructure that's planned along West Beverly Street. We will have a public forum hosted by the planning division. That will be Monday, September 25th at 6:00 PM. In a little, little bit different space at the Central Shenandoah EMS Council at 2312 West Beverly Street Stanton. It's in their training room. We'll have signage so people can find it. So come hear about the design for the bicycle infrastructure along West Beverly. Uh, the Timmons group will be presenting the plans and taking, um, feedback during that session as well. I wanted to provide a quick update on the flood alert system that you've heard about before. And when I asked for this update, I got a lot of engineering stuff, so I had to break it down. So you know how on your phones, a few weeks ago, when the tornado warning came through that you got, everybody's phone went crazy?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the National Weather Service is going to work with the city and with our flood sensors. So that would happen on your phone if something like that happened in the city. And so that, those discussions are just starting, but they're very, they are going to do this for us. It means we can tweak our system as well, our flood sensor system. Um, so we'll have more to roll out about that as that is finalized. So that was really exciting. They actually approached, um, the city in this regard to do that. So that's very cool. I, I couldn't read, I couldn't read what she wrote, Willow wrote. It was too jargony. So that's how I had to break it down. But speaking of water, we're currently still in a drought. The voluntary restrictions continue. Um, last week, folks may have seen that the city put out a press release. Um, well, the week before that, the Virginia DEQ put out a drought warning for our area. The city then put out a press release asking residents to voluntarily, um, to, for voluntarily restricted, voluntary restrictions for water use. As of this morning, the water level at Stanton Dam was six feet, 11 inches below spillway. It's not dire. It sounds bad, but it's really not that bad. Uh, but we're still asking for the voluntary restrictions. Um, we're not out of this quite yet. We've had some rain, which has been great. Um, the city is also taking internal efforts to conserve water and we'll continue to keep an eye on this. And if we have to send out any additional, um, guidelines or, or regulations, we will definitely do that. The mayor earlier mentioned Queen City, Mischief and Magic. That's next weekend. Actually a day, a week from tomorrow, you'll start to see the roads closing, um, starting at five o'clock. Parking restrictions, and there's going to be a press release and putting, we're going to be putting stuff out on social media about this as well. Several restrictions on downtown streets that will start, be effective 5:00 PM next Friday through 7:00 PM Sunday. Um, basically the following streets will be closed, Augusta Street from Johnson to Frederick Streets, Byers Street, Beverly Street from Lewis to Market Streets and New Street from Johnson to Frederick Streets. I mentioned the voting. It will not impact that at all. Folks can still go down central to vote at that spot in the park in Johnson Street. Johnson Street as a garage is always open during Queen City. Oh, and then also New Street from Johnson to Frederick Streets will be closed. The Wharf Parking Lot, however, will be closed for the festival as always. But again, the New Street and Johnson Street parking garages will be open as well. The Hardy and RMA parking lots. So I guess if, well, many of you probably have been downtown during that, so you know what it's like. Um, we're encouraging visitors to take the shuttle that comes, goes from Stanton Mall to downtown. So we're going to get the word out on that. Um, so that will be starting. You'll start to see activity a week from tomorrow. That's all I have tonight.
All right, Stanton, uh, they were all fired up at the, uh.
Were they?
Jerusalem advisory board.
I know. It's exciting.
Days to go.
How many, Leslie, do you know, what was last year? What was attendance? I know we have to guess to some extent. It was something like 18,000.
I've heard some wild numbers. Yeah, 20,000. I mean, it looks like it's, yeah, the pictures in the people when you're downtown are incredible. And I've seen pictures from previous years.
Yeah.
That just look amazing, but I, I want to say 20,000 is around the estimate that I keep hearing.
It's a lot for a town of 25.
People. It doubles our population, you know? I mean, it could. I mean, I know it's some, a lot of them are our people, our residents. I get it. But it's a lot of people. It's pretty intense. Last year was the first year I got to experience it because I got here and COVID hit. That was interesting.
Everyone leaves Sarah Lynch alone this week.
Yes, she was.
And the following week.
Yeah, yeah.
Let her rest after this is done.
She was, she was in high gear this morning. She was.
Her is.
All right.
So I know we going into matters of a public, but could I just say something about event that's happening?
The African American, yes, ma'am. And I meant to mention, would you like to say? That was on my. The African American festival and multi multicultural festival is this weekend at Gypsy Hill Park. Reminder that the loop around the park, I believe, will be closed to vehicular traffic during the time at the festival. So that's by Saturday and Sunday. So lots of exciting things happening in the city this weekend and then next weekend. So keep the party rolling.
Very cool. All right. That's all. That brings us to matters from the public. This part of the city council's agenda is entitled Matters From The Public. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. Matters from the public rules are available in paper form at the clerk's desk, online at the city of Stanton webpage. You are asked to familiarize yourself with these rules for commenting. Please come to the podium or begin your call. Identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, counsel. Um, my name is Johan Westenberg, 113 West Beverly Street. I own property at 940 West Beverly Street and from 8:39 to 9:50 West Beverly Street, there's a 15 mile per hour speed zone, which is so routinely ignored that, um, it's caused quite a few, um, mishaps on the streets. Uh, it, it's a narrow piece of street and it's very active. And my ask to the city council is, I'm under the impression that this piece of street actually is a piece of county road, but I think it's also a piece of city road there. So it's a little complicated, way beyond my pay grade. Could we please have a discussion at some point, uh, to put in some speed tables? Um, I understand that speed tables are a negative impact for emergency vehicles. I, I, I respect that. But the routine level of speed on that piece of road is, is just remarkable and it's, it's super dangerous. And that's my ask. So thank you for listening to that.
Repeat with the address, please.
Yeah. So, um, the speed, the, the 15 mile per hour zone is noted at 8:39 West Beverly or 8:37. I can't remember exactly which house. And then it runs up to 9:50, which is the little Anne Hathaway House, the Thatchruff Cottage.
Oh, that bend.
Yeah. So, yeah. And it goes right around that bend. And what happens is, you know, there's been a lot of, and this is important. There's been a lot of people who have invested, um, aside from myself, but there've been a lot of people who've invested in painting and upgrading the properties there. Property values in that, uh, section of street have, have gone up significantly because of people buying in. And, um, you know, people are really trying to make that stretch of road a better stretch of road. So, um, if we could get some speed tables in there, that would be great.
Yeah. Mr. Westenberg, my son used to live at 940. He was a resident there and he always parked across the street. And it literally terrified me that he did, that he lived there because he would walk across the street.
He was right to be terrified.
Cars just sailed through and, and the sort of a blind curve.
He's still living there?
Yeah. Oh, that's all my comments.
Well, thank you. Thank you for, thank you for hearing my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessler, we have someone online.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, caller.
This is Brenda Mead, 342 Sherwood Avenue. I very much appreciate the conversation tonight about Moxie Stadium. Uh, I, I do believe it's time that the users of the stadium, uh, were asked to support the, um, the upkeep and maintenance of the stadium. Uh, I, I really do think that the, uh, the details of the request for a proposal uh, included a number of items that, uh, that seemed excessive to me. Uh, I'm fully in support of making the field safe for people to play on, uh, including making sure they don't run into poles and, and into dips in the field and that sort of thing. But there are a number of things in the RFP in terms of the design of the facility that seem very excessive to me. For instance, uh, evaluating artificial turf in the infield. Designing a new warm-up area for pitchers to include, and I'm reading directly from the RFP here. Designing a new warm-up area for pitches, pitchers to include a fenced in area and covered seating area for pitchers and catchers. Design new storage areas to accommodate high school collegiate and summer league play. And I'm sure the Stanton Braves would use that as well. The press box and concessions and restroom facilities. And again, I'm reading directly from the RFP. The press box area should include two coaches offices on the lower level. It should include an attached restroom facility that's internal for staff and external for spectators. God forbid, they should go to the same restroom. Concessions area should include the following. And these are things that I think Ian Bowden would love to have in his restaurants. A refrigerator to store and display beverages, a freezer, three bay sinks, a long stainless steel serving counter. Storage, food prep surfaces, oven, fryer and grills, a separate window for merchandise sales. Design a permanent ticket booth at the entrance to the stadium. The road behind the stadium, and this is outrageous. Design or reconfigure the road behind the stadium to accommodate new structures. We're going to build a new road to accommodate the, this, these alterations to Moxie. This is not just for the safety and accessibility of spectators and players. It's way, way over the top. So I'm very glad to hear that we're looking carefully and I hope you will continue to look carefully at, at the, these modifications to, to Moxie Stadium. And, and I'd also like to add, you know, I, 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 Mark Robert, since, since we're now calling. you know, I, 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 Mark Robert, since, since we're now calling out citizens, I, 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 I'm, you know, in comments where citizens don't have the opportunity to, or former council members don't have the opportunity to respond in any way. Uh, you know, my vote and, and Mark Robertson's comments about my vote were taken completely out of context. The fire department chief made a case for his recommendation that we donate that fire engine to the folks in Kentucky. His assertion at that time was it had no real value and that we couldn't sell it. So the city attorney may have said what its value was, but the value of a property is not, is not what someone says it is. The value of the property is what you get for it. So from my perspective, I, I guess it's open season. Uh, uh, and, and so from, from, in the future, you know, my comments will include comments directed at city council members. Thank you.
Welcome.
Onstance Birch, uh, 319 Mary Gray Lane. Um, I'm addressing the housing shortage. It's not unique to Stanton. It seems like in the past year or so, uh, the shortage of housing become, has become acute and the price of rentals and sales has priced them out of the range of many people. I have a suggestion I'd like city council to consider. Um, when housing is going to be built or very often in the case of Stanton, renovated of other buildings, there are a lot of regulations and different licenses that are required. One person who came before council said that he planned one year to get all of the licenses and approvals and less than a year to do his actual construction. Could council or whatever body it should fall to try to streamline or, uh, eliminate or minimize some of the restrictions and some of the licenses and each one costs money. And very often, uh, parties who want to make changes need to hire lawyers, which if it's a large comp, a, a large corporation, that's not too much of a problem. As I say, this is not unique to Stanton. Um, I'm familiar with an issue in another state where a building was just renovated from one use to the same use, but it took a lot of time and money to get all of the approvals. So I just wish you'd consider simplifying the process and that may help the supply of housing. Thank you. One, um, proposal or requirement that I've noticed is that, uh, council would like all, um, parking lots and driveways, I guess, to be paved. Um, I'd like you to reconsider that because water that comes and the only source we have is rain. Um, if it comes on a porous surface, it can, uh, filter down and replenish the aqua floor. Um, water that hits on a paved surface got, just goes into the sewers and I guess eventually into, um, Chesapeake Bay. But you might consider a porous surface, if not gravel, something else. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
My name is Barbara Lee, 904 Rockway Street, Stanton, Virginia. And I come to invite the city council for the Union Town Cleanup. And when you come, please bring me a golf cart. Thank you. October 28th.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Kessler, anybody online?
No, sir.
Yeah. Your turn. Thank y'all.